This computer. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It is now seven something.
Seven oh nine.
Seven oh nine. Meeting in Zoom. We have before us a number of items on the agenda, so please bear with us. This may take a little while. We have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for March 12th and March 5th. We have public hearings, Gary's Auto Salvage, a condition to use permit renewal. Item number two is BDF Holdings, a minor subdivision application. We then have pending applications of Gary's Auto Salvage and BDF Holdings Incorporated, Therapin Landscape, Determination of Completeness, Smart Transportation, a major conditional use application, Determination of Completeness. Weir's Buick GMC Service Expansion, a plenary site plan, pre-application. We have two new applications. We have Old Logging Road Timber Harvest, which is a major condition to use application, Determination of Completeness, and Run To's Run Dog Daycare, major condition to use application, Determination of Completeness. And when we get all done with that, we can all go home. So I need, I need to I need to get a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Any discussion first? We have Steve in here twice now. Okay, hearing no discussion on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Let's take a look at the meetings of March 5th. Okay. We have three out of the five people that were here that day.
Yeah, I wasn't here that, for that meeting.
Marty, myself, and Jens. I would suggest that we table that at this point. Because right now, we, we don't even have a quorum to vote on it. So I'm gonna move that to March 5th, unless Susan joins.
The next set of meetings, Rich.
I'm sorry.
Looks like we have the same issue with the next set of minutes for the 12th as well.
Yeah, okay, then we will table both of these. If Susan successfully gets on, we'll handle those at the end of the meeting. The first item is a public hearing. Gary's Auto Salvage, a condition to use permit renewal for an existing auto salvage yard on a portion of a 16.5 acre site located at 258 River Road, Tax Map 40 Lot 3 in the R4 District. Gary Welch is the owner and applicant. Gary informed us that he would not be able to join us today. But since this was, since we've done the sidewalk and we're doing the public hearing on this, and here comes Susan. Yay!
Oh no, I'm so sorry!
That's quite okay.
Okay.
Yeah, since Gary said that he wouldn't be able to join us today, he does not have the technological capacity to do so. So at this point, I think, unless any of the planning board have objections, I think we could ju- we can just down to the pending applications and deal with it when, when he gets there.
Okeydoke.
Everybody else okay with that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Which is a minor subdivision. A proposal to subdivide a 31.5 acre parcel tax map for Lot 23 at 715 Alfred Road in the AR District into four lots. Subdivide the existing 5,000 square foot building on a proposed lot two into an additional four units and make improvements to the existing heavy hammer lane to bring it into conformance with the town commercial driveway standards. BDF Holding is the owner and applicant. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to that? Hearing none and seeing nobody's hands raised, I will close that public hearing at 7:14 and we will move right into the business at hand. The first of which is Gary's Auto Salvage. Since Mr. Welch was not able to join us through this wonderful miracle of technology. And this is just a conditional use renewal, one that we have renewed for quite a long time. We went out, we did the sidewalk, didn't see any problem. I want to know the board's feeling on giving Mr. Welch the permit and just vote that, that it is acceptable.
I, I move that we vote that it, it is acceptable.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to grant the permit to Gary's Auto Salvage.
To the chair.
Do we have the findings of fact on that, Ted?
I do.
Yeah, and you all received a copy of the findings of fact. Do you want me to read it, or do we just all look at it?
Well, does, does everybody have a copy? I think reading it would, would put us all to sleep sitting here.
Absolutely, put me to sleep. Yes, I mean, you all have a copy of the findings of fact.
We do, yeah.
It's on your digital packets, so. Unless there were any changes on it, it's basically the same as it was before, just a change of date. You folks didn't do anything different out there, and there's no reason to concern yourself with the, everything was exactly as it's shown on the map, and so the question is.
I'll move that we, we skip reading it and just, we have the text in front of us. If anybody needs it, we can send it to them. But I'd say we just move forward.
I'll second that motion.
Well, we, we now have two motions on the floor, so.
Oh, I didn't hear the other one.
Oh, Susan made a motion that we grant the permit.
Oh, I thought.
But I think you, I think you're right, so I'm going to rule Susan's at this point is out of order because we have to decide, we have to vote on your motion to waive the reading of the findings of fact.
Okay, I, I misheard the original motion.
No, that's quite okay. Does anybody have a problem with the motion to waive the readings of finding a fact? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Marty, if you're in favor, put your hand up. All right, good. It is unanimous. Now back to Susan's original motion. Do you want to repeat it, Susan?
Yes, I move that we approve the renewal of the permit for a BDF Hold- is, is it BDF Holdings?
Nope, it's Gary.
Okay, for Gary's auto.
Don't get Ben excited.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to grant the renewal for, renewal permit for Gary's Auto Salvage. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Yay! Next. BDF Holdings, a major subdivision application. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? And I should look at the town planner and ask the town planner if he has any information that he would like to share with us.
I was just wondering, unfortunately, since I was sick at the time of the March 12th meeting, I'm not really sure what happened. I just read the minutes and they were a little they weren't very complete, but I just had some questions. I noticed in the minutes, it mentioned something about the, the tree line and there were four, there were three things that, that you have to do according to the requirements for the minor subdivision, and that was the easement description for a heavy hammer lane, describing it as a private driveway in Lot 1, which lots 1 and 2 enjoy access and share maintenance responsibility. It's designated as, with meets and bounds as if it's a private way, and so we need that clarified. The second thing was the applicant. It's supposed to show where there's forest cover on lots 2, 3, and 4, and where there's supposed to be any removed as it's developed, so convert it to lawn or any other cover. And the other one, which is 72D28, was the applicant was required to submit a narrative of logging operations that occurred along the forest through certification, timber harvesting complies with me Forest Service Timber Harvesting Standards. I think I, that was in the notes I did back in, wow, back in March. And then there was only the concern about fire chiefs, whether you guys wanted me to fire chief's letter about that Y hammerhead furnace at the end, whether he accepted that and the curve in heavy hammer laying and the board. So I, I don't have a letter from the fire chief. That's the only thing that I have to say. And I think the only other thing was let's see, stormwater, stormwater, it looked like that there's gonna be no stormwater improvements, no way of handling the stormwater from the road or the improvements on that road in the future. And that, those were my questions.
Do you want to address those, Paul?
Um, well, real quickly, the four bullets, I believe I wrote an easement description and Ben gave that to you at the last meeting, I believe.
I wasn't here, that was.
It is described in me. Oh, okay.
Did, and he addressed hammer, the hammerhead, the turning radius on the hammerhead at the last meeting as well.
The chief did? I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that. Paul, can you give me a copy of that?
No, we don't have a copy. I think Ben met with him personally. I did run the the turnaround is not the Y. The Y is the access to Lot 3. The turnaround is gonna be used, the existing driveway accessing Lot 2. That will take care of a fire truck turning around. We're adding 85 feet to the road because of that, so the truck can pull up the 85-foot section and then back up into the driveway of Lot 2, and that's gonna act as a turnaround, and I believe the chief said he'd be okay with that.
Yeah, and we discussed all of these matters at the last meeting, and I brought the easement letter from the timber harvester, and we talked about the curve, and we are gonna get that in writing from the fire chief. He just hasn't responded to emails yet. We've talked in person a bunch of the, the board was seeming pretty, pretty happy with all those discussions we had at the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, if I could get copies of that, I didn't have any copies of that, so I apologize for that.
I got the whole packet that I brought to the meeting, and I gave it to everyone who was at the meeting, and I'll, I'll swing one by your office and drop it off with them.
Okay, the only, then the other question would be, what about, what's the drainage, Paul? Are you, you're gonna make it per lot? Every lot's gonna be responsible for their own drainage?
That's correct at this time, because we have, you know, obviously no idea as to what's gonna be constructed, what size building to construct, how much parking lot we're gonna have. So yeah, they're gonna have to deal with their own, on lot stormwater. Fortunately, Lot 3 is a pretty good sized lot. Does have some good topographic drop-off so that tension point can be put on Lot 3 fairly simple. And obviously, Lot 4 is the main land, and they have all kinds of potential due to their own stormwater. Okay, so we're just gonna add 85 feet of road at this point. And just so we can accommodate the fire truck turnaround.
Okay, all right, and so.
And your questions had with.
So where's the drainage on lot, so Lot 4 is gonna take care of its own drainage?
Yeah, we have, correct. I put a drainage, I have a drainage easement on Lot 4. That drainage easement will be able to be available to Lot 3, should they want to use it. And then, but I would think Lot 3 is gonna have their own stormwater pond closer to the stream, because it drops off pretty good in that area. Still maintaining adequate setback and still able to put a stormwater pond for Lot 3.
Okay. Paul, we need that fire chief to approve this thing, you know, in a written letter, that's it, right? If the board's, those are my comments. I don't know what the board wants to do with that, then.
Does the board have any comments for the applicant?
No, I think we discussed this in detail at the last meeting. I think, you know, provided Ted gets the letter he needs from the fire chief, it seemed like everything, all the ducks were in their proper rows. Was that your impression, Rich?
I, I don't remember. The, I had, I had the packet with me and I don't have any of the easement information in it.
So I'm not. The original packet didn't have easement in there. That was something that Ted asked for in the, his March 9th memo, and we wrote that easement up and Ben submitted it at the March 9th meeting or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Well, it was the 12th.
March 12th meeting, right.
Yeah, March 12th meeting.
That's what he had said, but I, again, I'm just looking at the packet that I have, and I don't, I didn't have a copy of that easement here, and this is what I had after the meeting was over. So I mean, I could, I could be confused.
Yeah, Rich, I don't know if you remember, I walked up at the very beginning of the meeting and I had three pieces of paper, and the easement was in that, they were all together, and the easement was in that, but we can.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna have to assume that I misplaced it, because that, you know, Susan and, and I'm assuming Tom, Tom has it, Jens has it, so I must have just misplaced it somehow. The, the only concern that I really have with having everybody do their own stormwater study is the cumulative effect of all of that stormwater. If I look, if I look at it and say, well, here's a two acre lot, and they're gonna put a little bit of water on it, and then there's another two acre lot that they're gonna put some water on it, I, I'm just concerned that the cumulative effect of having those three separate lots is going to be more than, than the, a more negative impact than it would be if it were just one stormwater analysis for one particular piece of property.
No, I can understand what you're saying, but, you know, we would have to make some assumptions that probably would not be valid whatsoever. And again, you know, Lot 2, we did do a stormwater plan for Lot 2, the existing building, and there's this driveway, and we proved to you that that did not have any impact on downstream structures and our site flows. Lot 3, we're talking minimum lot size on these projects, a one acre. Lot 3 is a three, is almost a four acre parcel, has plenty of room for their own stormwater retention. For me to actually try to figure out what's gonna be happening on these parcels is virtually impossible and a waste of my client's money.
Yeah.
And with this subdivision, we, we left the lot sizes larger and hoping that, you know, future plans and divisions will come along and we set up the best we can for, for big business kind of to come in, but right now, we just have really no idea what's happening. It's a very simple split right now.
It just looks like the drainage easement, Paul, is gonna be going on to the adjacent properties, you need to go into Lot 3. Okay, lousy lighting here. Lot 3? Well, I'm just looking at the drainage easement that's at the end of Heavy Hammer Road, I mean, Heavy Hammer.
Yep.
That goes on the Lot 3, doesn't it?
The drainage easement is on Lot 4.
The drainage going from that portion of, 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 of Heavy Hammer Road. I gotta see some better light. I'm just looking at the contours.
Yep.
Oh no, it's gonna go towards Pettit's land, isn't it?
Correct.
It's gonna head to the east.
Yep, there's a split here where Lot 3 heads to the stream. Lot 4 is a high point, so the majority would head towards Pettit, that's correct. Or the stormwater may be going in a southerly direction and the pond would be at the southern end of the site. It all depends where the, most of the development is.
But the stormwater along Heavy Hammer Lane, how's that on the, on the south side of it? How you gonna disperse that?
That's gonna go just along the sideline of Heavy Hammer Lane down towards the drainage easement, towards Pettit's property. That's where that would go.
Is it gonna, how's it gonna be dispersed? You can put a spreader there or something?
Not right now, no, I'm just adding 80 feet of road and that, we're gonna carve it under that road right now, and so the water is flowing in the same current location as it is right now, so I'm not proposing anything at this point. That would come for lots future, or Lot 4 and Lot 3, once they decide to do the infrastructure and pavement and roads and access points and it would come then, but we're not proposing anything right now. We're talking about adding 80 feet of gravel.
Right. Um, and then, of course, you know, we saw that issue of once you get past 15, 15 parking spaces, you're gonna have to pave that, that Heavy Hammer, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd have to put that as, as a caveat in, in the approval. Because as the planning board will probably remember that we have this thing about commercial driveways and commercial parking lots. We carry more than 15 cars, where we have more than 15 parking spaces, you have to pave the parking parking lot and the, and the road, driveway. So, right now, they're below that. And Ben, you, I saw your, your submission that Christie put together from you. You're dividing that into two units right now? Your, your, your building? Building's gonna be two units, or are you still going from four?
Two units. We, we have people to fill both units, and that's exactly what they want right now for square footage, so.
Okay, so you're going from four, a subdivision of four to two, or are you gonna make it two that can be broken into four at some day, some point?
The building has the ability to be broken into four, but for the next foreseeable future, which is 10 years, we, we just need the two, two two sides, one demising wall.
Okay, all right.
My, my opinion was to keep it at four, and then somebody's gonna have the, let's split it into, somebody will have two units and the other person will have two units. Unless Ben wants me to modify the plan and just call unit A, unit B, and then have to come back in front of the board if you want to split it again.
I, you know, I don't think, you know, we're not gonna carve a subdivision of the interior space. We're just going to our main concern there is the amount of parking, that's all. What, what's the trip point at which, at which he has to pave that, that area? That's, that's the only real big concern the planning board has with the building. Because somebody's gonna trip it at some point. That just pushes everybody over to pave it. I know Ben's always considered paving it. It's just he's holding off now until it, it has to be paved by the regulations, that's all. So, that's why I was asking about the two, because it seemed that it would have less of a number of parking spaces that would be required as a result.
Yeah, I didn't know if I should modify the plan, it's called unit A, unit B, or just leave it as four separate units. That's up to Ben, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you could get approved, I mean, right now, it doesn't matter. It really, actually, it's not, the only thing that's relevant is the amount of parking.
Correct, yep. Yep.
So.
Actually, Jim Nagel just approved our application to, to put up our demising wall and get ready to do the lease, and our two current leasers have no desire to have pavement. Everyone's happy the way it is, so I said, well, we'll see what the next person to come on the property is and then figure out pavement then.
Okay, well, I think we'll, we'll continue with the four then. I would agree with Paul, probably be in your best interest to get an approval for, with it as four, and then we'll just keep, keep track of how many parking spaces there are.
Okay.
Okay?
I think as long as the, the potential people coming in realize if they get up over the requisite, is it 15 parking spaces, Ted?
It's 15 vehicles. It's not even parking spaces.
Over the 15 vehicles and they have to pave it, somebody's gonna, if, if you currently are leasing one of those sites or you bought one of those sites, you're gonna have to pave your parking, the parking lot.
I think it's parking spaces, not vehicles. It'll take me a while to find it, but I'm pretty sure it's parking spaces.
But, but, but the situation would be the same. I mean, the minute somebody says, okay, we're, we're not gonna have 16 parking spaces, everybody has to pave, pave that area.
Correct, I guess if you walk out there at any one time, you see 16 cars out there, then he's triggered pavement.
Yeah, but it's not a question of, of, of walking out there and seeing this car.
If they're showing, it's 15 parking, 15 or more parking spaces.
Parking spaces, yeah, it's parking spaces, yeah.
It's 15 or more parking spaces, so you, you're gonna end up with four sites out there.
Yeah, it'll, it'll get triggered at some point.
Of course. At some point, it will get triggered, and then everybody is going to have to, to pave their section, and as long as they realize that.
Yeah. Yes, we realized that, absolutely.
I think they realized that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, does the board have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. I think the next step, we need to make sure we get a letter from the fire chief. So if, if, if somebody makes a proposal, that has to be part of the condition. Oh, no, this is.
Oh no, I'm here.
Okay. Well, you were down in the lower left-hand corner and Linda Zook was in the upper right, and now you're in different places on my screen, so I don't know what's going on.
There you go. So are we, have we decided if the application is complete yet? Is that?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so so we're ready just to approve it?
With, with. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a findings of facts written for this, because I wasn't sure where you guys were on this thing, so I didn't. Well, we still need to wait for the fire chief. I'm not sure what's holding him up, but, but we really.
When we, so when we left the last meeting, they done it, we have that letter for final approval, and I didn't think final was this meeting. I thought it would be one meeting after this, so, yeah, I'll, I'll chase.
I'll get the findings all squared away, ready to go.
Okay, so we have time for that.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Enough.
All right. Well, excellent.
So I'm a little bit behind here, because I wasn't in the last meeting, so the party did receive preliminary plan approval? And we're gonna be going for final.
It's, it's a mi-, it's a minor, Paul.
Oh, okay.
Since you got rid of that lot, that additional lot, what used to be the
Okay.
Sort of a minor. Take care lot, since you got rid of that, it's, and, and you don't have any real road. This road isn't a road, it's a driveway.
Okay, so it brought down to minor.
Down to minor, that's why, that's why, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. So we're set to go at the next meeting.
So all we need is a letter from the fire chief, and he's ready to go for final approval.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you very much.
Well, good time, Paul.
Thanks, Ben.
Very well.
Okay, on to the next, isn't it? Therapin Landscape. Plenary Site Plan Application Determination of Completeness.
Right. And you've got Mike Corsi and Steve Doe here. He's gone.
No, Steve's still here.
Steve's there twice, but he's muted right. Okay.
I can't get him to unmute. Steve, you need to unmute your mic.
That's the problem. Lower left-hand corner, he might not be able to hear us. He's muted.
We know sign language.
Well, I, I can't.
Better?
Who else wanna?
There you go.
There he is.
Better?
Yeah.
We did, we did a sidewalk a week ago.
Yeah.
Any comments from the board about the what we found out there?
No, all looked good. The, the land was mostly high and dry, except for the few spots that you weren't really gonna impacted at all, so staying out of the wetlands. There was plenty of screening, a lot of great hemlock trees along Sam's Road. But I think those are some of the things that we were looking for, and they look good.
I agree. I, I thought everything looked pretty good out there. There was one question that came, that came up about the water and whether or not it was anything that to be concerned about, but from what I understand, talking with Ted, no, that's fine. It's not gonna impact. It's not gonna impact.
Yeah, the wetlands were, were not a regulatory wetlands, so, um, that was pretty clear from the field, so, um, I felt comfortable about the proximity of the, or the parking lot, excuse that. Uh, the only thing that I noted was, I'm a little concerned about the, the lack of buffer along the north property line or along the northern side of that, of that parking lot, because it's a little thin there along that trail. And, uh, um, although that, uh, the, what's her name, uh, the Hopkins property is not developed yet. They've, they've got some project ideas in the hopper right now, I've been talking to them, and they might be sensitive to that parking lot. So I'm not sure exactly how you'd wanna handle that, Steve. The northern boundary, we might need to do some filling in there, uh, you know, with either vegetation or some fencing to make sure that, that they screened, not, not buffer, but screened, because it is commercial, um, make sure that it's screened from their land. And I guess I didn't have a real good, I, I kind of got the feeling of where it was along that side, but I was a little concerned about the density along that side. I thought Sam's Road was fine, looked good. And I also reviewed the stormwater and I'm gonna withdraw and request to have that, have that peer reviewed, because I think it's, uh, it's actually more than adequate. So.
Ted, wasn't the, uh, lay of the land kind of sloping upward as you move toward the, uh, northern layer of butter?
Uh, it's, it's actually, it's undulating land through that, that section right there. Yeah, I, it's, you know, it's undulating, that's the best I can come up with. It does, it does drop a little bit, but, um, you know, this is always the problem, when you have a piece of property that's, that's in, in natural state, you know, against another area that's natural. And, um, well, it's not natural, it's pretty clear in that area, but, uh, yeah, that was my only concern, really, in that section.
Question I would have, when the, assuming the butter develops theirs, do they have to provide buffer requirements as well?
Because clearly, they have, they have. Yeah, they, I'm sorry, Steve. Yeah, if they have a parking lot there, they, yeah, they, they have to, uh, they have to buffer it too, they have to buffer it from you.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would apply to both parties. It's, it's a buffering not of the project, it's a buffering of the parking lot. And that's the requirement in that district, that's all. But I think it's actually a screening, because these are, these would be two commercial uses, because what they're looking at is commercial use as well. So it would be more of a screening than it would be a, a buffering, which is a, you know, is, is a blockage, this would be a screening. So. Otherwise it looked pretty good to me.
Was there a question about noise, getting a noise study?
Yeah, we, not so much a noise study, but, but, uh, something that would give us the, the decibel ratings, uh, at the property line, so that we don't run into the same problems we've had, uh, with other contractor yards.
So, so what Mike has done, like, um, he's only gonna have one piece of equipment operating over there. And he got some decibel readings of that piece of machinery, like, right next to the machine, and then he went to the, uh, property line. And at the property line, he's getting about, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, about fifty-six, something like that, decibel readings at the property line. And I believe the standard in that zone is sixty.
I was actually, I was actually, at a hundred feet from the machine, uh, was fifty point one decibels.
I think it's sixty-five, since that's a business, so, Mike.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, you know, the other thing, the important thing to point out is that that machine's not gonna be running all day long. It would only be running when a truck comes back to the yard to get loaded with some material. So you're talking about, you know, maybe a ten-minute intervals here and there, not, not a, not a consistent, uh, noise all day.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're aware of that. Um, well, if you can get me that information, and, um, that, that'd be great. If you could submit that stuff to us, that would be great, because we, we, we would need that, because we ran, uh, there was a court case over this, so we're rather sensitive to it. We'll make sure you guys don't get, uh, in, in, uh, in, in the same vice. So if you can give us that evidence, we would greatly appreciate that, in written form, we can put in the file.
Alright.
And then I, I realized that we're
Okay.
very close to, to hydrants, because there, there's two of them in the area, but do we still need a, a letter from the fire chief? Saying that he's, he's satisfied with, uh, the project's compliance to the land use ordinance?
Yeah, it sounds like I gotta talk to the chief tomorrow and see if I can get him to write two letters, because we need that one for, uh, we know, um, that there's adequate, they're within adequate distance in the five-seven, we just need, you know, uh, section five-seven, we just need to, uh, get a letter from him, that's it. So. So I would say, you know, you know, pending, pending the receipt of that, of that, that information, this application is complete. And I would recommend to the board that, that you might deem it complete, with, with the submission of this and schedule a public hearing.
I'll make a motion on that, that we deem it complete with that one, um, thing from the, um, fire chief that.
And then noise ordinance.
And, okay, noise. And addressing a little bit of beefing on the, uh, the buffering too, or the, uh, the north side screening. The board agree with that or not?
Well, I, I don't know, I, I don't know if we really need that, um, north side, I mean, on the, um, what's her name, um? Yeah.
Property?
Yeah. Do we, do we, it's all, um, natural and wooded, there's completely, uh, no neighbors yet there?
Well, yeah, um, I would just remind the board that you did that to motor land though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we gave them the option, they could.
They have got the option of putting landscaping and tearing up that portion of the land, or putting it on fence, and they opted for the fence.
Alright, so I'll include.
They bought the property next door, so.
Is that something that we can have a look at once the actual clearing is done and see what's left for, for a buffer?
Well, that, that would be something the planning board could, I mean, that would be, that could be a proposal, you could present to the planning board, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd be amenable to that, we, as long as we can meet the, it's screening standards, not buffering, correct?
It's screening standards, yep.
Yeah, as long as we can meet the reading standards, then, then I would be fine with it.
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, yep. Right, so that, motion then.
No seconded. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. The application complete, pending a couple of more items that need to be dropped off. Any, any discussion? No, I think the one thing that, that we need to be clear on, we should not schedule a public hearing until that information is, has been delivered. And then, once it's delivered, we can schedule a public hearing, because we'd wanna be able to go straight, straight afterward and, and issue.
Right, well, those are conditions of, uh, of being complete, we can't really move forward without it being complete.
Okay, that works for me.
Well, through the chair?
Yeah.
I could, I, I could, I only need seven days advertisement of that, so if these guys get, got it to me next week and I could get a advertisement by, let's say, Wednesday into the paper, would that be alright, or do you wanna review that, um, before you make a, a call for a public hearing?
I think that would be fine, how does the rest of the board feel?
I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that would work.
Okay. Yeah, get, get the information to Tad and then he can schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, point of order, have we voted on that?
No, you didn't vote on that.
No, we did not.
Cool.
Thank you. Also, we, we need to, we've got a motion on the floor to the team, deem the application complete, pending the delivery of the information to the town planner, who will then schedule a public hearing. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Alright, now we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good evening. You also. Next item on the list, smart transportation, conditional use, application determination of completeness. Uh, proposal to operate a thirty-two vehicle livery transport business within the existing Rundle cell storage facility. And you should all have some information from Tad on that.
John, on?
I'm here, yep.
No, John's here, okay.
And Susan, if you're getting coffee, you have to share with the rest of us.
Oh, no, I didn't, I just, every, I won't even tell you, I went to get, uh, hand cream, because everything is just so dry, even though it's been raining. So I thought I just put stuff on my hands while I was listening to you guys.
Okay.
Okay, so we, you have before you a list of quite a few things that we are being asked to wait, to have waived.
Right, and I think a lot of those things, the gentleman that came on behalf of the applicant, um, thought that all those things had pretty much been hammered out, uh, with Tad, and Tad wasn't at the meeting, so we didn't know, and Tad's notes weren't clear, so Tad, maybe you can shed some light on.
Those notes, I think I sent those notes all to you, as you're, uh, dealing with every single one of those issues. Should be in the notes that you received.
Yeah.
I looked at that, I was trying, trying to remember everything that we discussed at the meeting, because there were quite a few line items.
Well, I think I addressed every single one of them after the public hearing, after the sidewalk. Should be in the notes that you received in your electronic packet.
Right, and the second, um, there.
Yeah, I think it was dated, what, April something?
April second?
Yeah, I think the, I've.
First.
No, March thirty-first, yeah, the March thirty-first one. Yeah. Yeah, I, well, I guess we can go down that list, uh, John asked for a waiver on the property boundary survey and uh, I know I found, uh, some issues out there that were, uh, made me a little concerned about where the building was gonna be. Um, what I did do, and I, I think I documented in that thirty-first, March thirty-first, uh, um, notes was that I found, John, I found your neighbor's survey. Okay, anybody, well, that's no help whatsoever, but, it's, uh, it was done by, uh, Lower Village Survey, it was done, uh, on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen, so it's very recent. And it shows, uh, what Jens had suspected and what, uh, Mr. Butterworth has suggested, and that is the, uh, that the, uh, the right-of-way there is much shorter than it is farther down, it actually starts pinching down, uh, and, and skewing way to the west, but, um, I think that we've, what I felt fairly comfortable, um, especially since there's an iron pin that was set, uh, on the DMR drive, that that, uh, right-of-way probably is about twelve to fourteen feet, hard to say, you know, twelve is a sixty, sixty scale now. About twelve feet off the edge of pavement. Um, so that would mean that a fifty-foot setback from that, we put it about in the middle of that parking lot is, um, let's see, uh, what is it, it's about, uh, let's see, where did I cap? I said it looks like it's, uh, about sixteen feet west of the building line of that first storage unit, that used to be the, the house, or the, the living unit. So, um, you would, you need to be able to, to set where that setback is, uh, for, for us to know exactly where that building's gonna go. And that, I think we need a little more detail on that, so you could either take a chance on that or maybe get Lower Village Survey to show you exactly where that fifty-foot line is, but it's, it's chewing up a lot of that parking lot and, and it's, uh, it's just shy, it's just a few feet shy of that building line. So if you can establish that on a, on a better plan than a decency scale, uh, I've, I'm not sure the planning board would need a, a full survey.
Do, do you have the survey that we submitted?
Yeah, yeah, I do, that was a, I don't have a registered survey from you, I have what your LA pulled, pulled out. But I, um, I've got, this is actually a, a registered survey and it was done this, in December.
Right, and we used that same survey from Lower Village.
Well, you did.
It was set on there.
Okay.
I believe in the top left, I don't have the survey printed in front of me, but I believe in the top left it indicates that that's from, um, Lower, Lower Village Survey.
Yep, and it does in fact show that, yep. So I think, having found Lower Village Survey's, um, product there, I, I, I think we can, we, we don't have to waive it, they provided that, that piece of information. So the property boundary survey's been provided, and I feel comfortable about that, ha, having looked at the, the original Lower Village Survey too. Um, and then the, uh, the scale on that, I think, uh, we talked about that, uh, and that's a sixty scale. Is the planning board okay with that? Usually it's supposed to be forty. Planning board would have to give a sixty, uh, have, have to waive it, uh, from sixty to forty, is that alright? That would be a waiver, we would, I would recommend that.
Yeah.
Exist setback lines are provided.
Yeah.
I didn't find any easements or, or rights of way that conflicted on that property. The topo survey, obviously that's not needed, except for what's gonna happen in the paved area. Um, because one of the things we're gonna discuss is, is the issue of the drainage. And I think that was really the only thing in my list, I went down the whole list here, location of drainage facilities, there aren't really any site, on-site soils, this is urban land over a wetland, it's fill on wetlands, site distances. Um, again, we got a site distance that's on the survey, on the, on the, uh, actual DMR drive. And it's, it's twenty-seven hundred feet to the north, about eight hundred feet to the south, and it's the same next door, so it, it meets the five hundred feet, uh, minimum standard in both directions, even though there's gonna be increased traffic, there's more than adequate site distance. Fire suppressions, I, I asked the chief for a letter, I don't have that yet, but I think there's a hydrant pretty close. Um, as I recall, um, it's, you know, DMR. There's also, um, let's see, outdoor lighting plan, the applicant's not going to need a, a lighting plan, because he's not proposing any lighting. Landscaping, the only thing there is, since there are some, there's gonna be a new building there, he needs to put in the two street trees and that's about it. No signs, on-site soil investigation, the only thing is that we're gonna need an LSE to, uh, that, um, to verify that the septic system's still functioning. Um, probably wanna talk to the code enforcement officer about that. And the only other real issue there, I think, that staff had was, uh, and I think Jamie raised it at the staff review meeting, let's see, excuse me, at the, uh, sidewalk, was, um, the fact that that, 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 uh, wetland is in fact a regulated shoreline zone, it's on the maps. And the concern there is, um, how we deal with drainage, because right now it's, it's draining towards that wetland. And we have some unstable bank in that location, and it seems to be eroding away. Whether or not that was pushed there by snowplows, but we're losing the fence and some of the bank there, and that is a regulated wetland. Um, and so I think we need to have some sort of stormwater management plan and how water gets into that wetland from the parking lot.
My, uh, my, my guy said, uh, Scott Strider, the guy that did all, did the planning, said that he would, he would suggest we create a planted level lip spreader, to slow the flow of water, control the release of runoff and stream through wood area. Um, we know that that'll take a chapter three oh five permit by rule, for work adjacent to a protected natural resource.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to get a DEP permit for that, yeah, but this is also our, you're also gonna have to show that to us, because this is one of our regulated shoreline zones. And it, you're supposed to have a, this is, I would call that a wooded wetland in there. And I would call that, you need a fifty-foot setback, but you have an existing, you have existing fill in that setback and it has, and the planning board has to decide what they, what they wanna do with that, because you're not really changing much, you're intensifying the use. But they would need to see how you're gonna handle stormwater going from that parking lot into the, uh, into the wetland. So if your guy's gonna do a, if he's gonna do a permit by rule, then we should get a copy of that, we need to take a look at that as well. So if your guy's going to do a if he's going to do a permit by rule, then we should get a copy of that. We need to take a look at that as well. Okay?
Okay.
Let's see, anything else? I think I went down the list, so. Okay, so we what we what we have, what staff recommends, it's up to you you folks, but staff recommends waive the boundary survey. Waive the site plan drawn to 60 scale. Existing and proposed setbacks are provided. There are no exist wave the existing rights of way and easements. Topographic survey will be only related to how he's going to handle stormwater drainage from the from the parking lot, location of onsite streams and wetlands, your 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 engineer or whoever's doing that is going to have to locate that that the boundary of that wetland anyways as part of his his permit application. So you'll need to do that, show that on on the permit application of the plan. I recommend waiving the location of trees exceeding eight inches, drainage trails and tree lines and floodplain for some, although there is no 100-year floodplain. And location of existing utilities. I don't think there's any digging that's going to be going around there and you're not putting in any other utilities. Let's see, identification, waving, location of drainage facilities, there aren't any really except for culvert. But you'll need to show us where you're going to how you're going to handle that runoff from that parking lot. Identification of onsite soils, we already know what that is, so I'd waive that. It's fill on on wetlands. Site distance, I'd waive that or or say that the that it has adequate site distance. We need that letter from the chief on fire suppression. We'll need a detailed sheet of that'll be part of the the drainage stuff, so that that will be included in that. So the detail sheet will be part of the stormwater plan. Outdoor lighting plan, waive that, landscape plan, yeah, you gotta put in two trees in accordance with 595 and 6654. Let's see, no signs, so that will sign that that can be waived. Onsite soil investigation, we will need the code enforcement will need this, too. We'll need just an LSE to take a look at that septic system and determine that we'll meet the need of the use and that it still works. And then that stormwater, the way you're going to handle stormwater, that that one we need. So the other ones you can waive. And on the list, that would, yes.
As you were going through listing them, I want to make sure I have the ones that you're you're saying we should get. They would be number five? Number six?
I wouldn't know. I wouldn't say five for the whole site because it's this is only affecting this where they're where they're going to be discharging the stormwater from the from the parking lot.
Okay.
So I would say six.
12?
Six, 12. That that'll come with the stormwater management plan.
So we don't need 13?
No. 15?
Yeah.
17 and 18.
Okay, so those those are the ones that that we're going to have to require. You feel comfortable waiving all of the other ones?
Absolutely.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, then. We need a motion to waive everything except the half dozen items that Tad has pointed out.
Yeah, I'll I'll make that motion. I'll need help on which one. Motion that what do we deem this complete?
We're going to waive everything except for.
Wait, okay, waive, I'm sorry, waive everything except for five, which is around the the wetlands area only. And is it site distance? That number 11, did I skip one?
We're we're going to waive everything except number six, number 12, number 15, number 17 and number 18.
Okay.
On the list that Dad sent out to us.
All right, was the site distance? Are we all set on that one?
Yeah, we're all set on that one. We're going to.
Okay. Okay. I feel pretty comfortable about that. I don't think they have to get an engineer to do that. That's pretty. Yeah, it's a long stretch. Okay. A long stretch. It's already been done. Leon already did that. Okay. Drive, which is just a couple of feet away, so. Right. Okay. So that's the motion.
So we need a second.
Seconded.
Who seconded that?
Roger.
I did.
Roger? Jens?
Yeah.
Jens did, I'm sorry, Jens.
Any discussion?
Ted, can I this is John, can I an actual description of what number six, 12, 15, 17 and 18 are?
Yep. Number six is the location of onsite streams, wetlands and water bodies according to the zoning map.
Totally, Matt.
It's is it something you just email over to me, Ted?
Yeah.
Cool. I don't need I don't need.
I'll do that tomorrow. I'll do that tomorrow. Okay?
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved unanimous.
Okay. I will get that to you tomorrow, John.
Thank you, Ted.
And you get if your if your engineer wants to talk to me about, you know, how we can approach, you know, some of the some of this stuff, I'll be happy to talk to him, okay?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear since I haven't done this process before.
Yeah.
Because are we going to have a public hearing on the 26th or are we going to have another discussion on the 26th?
It's up to the board.
Okay.
Well, we need to determine the application complete, so at this point we can't do that.
Can it be done, can it be pending complete pending those things getting to Tad with seven days prior to the the next meeting?
I I don't that's again, that's up to the board. We did it for the last applicant. How do you guys feel about doing it now?
I think what's fair for one is fair for the others, so I'm all right with that.
I am, too, as long as this stuff gets to Tad in time.
Right.
I agree.
Was that you, Jens, saying you agree?
That's correct. I agree.
Thank you. Marty's waving his hand. I assume that means you agree, Marty.
I haven't heard from Marty.
Yes, I do as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Then we we need to determination of completeness, pending delivery of all of the information to Tad. And then he can post for a public hearing. Somebody, anybody?
I'll make that motion then, move along. So just so we deem it complete with that condition.
Okay.
I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded for determination of completeness, pending the receipt of all of the information requested. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Talk time.
Next up. Linda, unmute yourself.
Okay, let's hope everybody's quiet in the background.
Okay, Marty. Just throw them all out, Linda.
I know. They're all home.
This is a plenary site plan pre-application, a proposal to construct 2,500 square foot expansion. We did the sidewalk last week. We went out, we looked at it. There were a couple of items. Not the least of which involves our getting a complete application.
Okay, what were the couple of items?
A full plenary site plan application including stormwater management. Topo contours, you're not relocate, are you relocating any of the parking out there?
We're eliminating some of the parking.
Eliminating. Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
The DEP stormwater application.
I'm going to let Paul take over for that.
Right, yeah, he said he's going to, once he submits it, he'll get the application, the notification to us that he has submitted it.
That's correct.
But we don't have it yet.
No.
Those were the few items that we were looking for.
I think, you know, I was hoping we could go through the application checklist real quick to make sure that we're not going to get surprised at anything you might want to have. It's all pretty basic. I'm kind of just limiting my project to the project limits where it would just with the exposed buildings going. I'm not going all back to the furthest buildings and trying to locate outdoor storage, outdoor storage facilities required by the ordinance. It says I should show outdoor storage, inventory of those, so I'm hoping that won't be necessary because I'm just fine tuning my project this way addition is and just how I treat the runoff for the addition. So I know the checklist says show wetlands in the entire property. Now kind of down just to the wetlands adjacent to the light activities, so hopefully the planning board is okay with that. Obviously, I'm going to do a traffic study, you know, adding, I think it's going to say we're adding four bays or four internal working stations, which in the long run is going to add two employees to this project. So as soon as we can get, that would be applicable for a traffic study. So I just kind of want to make sure when I submit the application, I'm not leaving something that the board might want to see. Again, outdoor stores, there is some outdoor stores way back. I think they store some clouds in a fenced area. You know, you can't see it from any place on the site really, so I'm not going to show that. I'm limiting my scale just to the previous area and the buildings. So real quickly, I'm not doing any studies and impact studies and all those type of things. I don't think we need to. It's a commercial project, no traffic, no groundwater, stormwater calculations. I'm not really going to do any pre-stormwater. I'm just going to submit this stormwater quality. We're going to treat the new roof and treat about four 40 feet of the old. That gutter comes down, or you saw the gutter's coming down under the pavement. We're going to grab that to discharge a new roof. That's going to discharge to our French drain, so we're actually going to treat the new building, but fortunately. So I'm hoping. Questions?
Yep. With the chair?
Yes, Ted.
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, I I would agree with all that. If you are you going to have any end treatment for the discharge? I don't know what the velocity of the water is going to be coming out of that that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to have, you know, it's obviously, you know, it's a large storage volume for the runoff of the roof and it's going to be discharged to a four-inch or a six-inch pipe. We will have some sort of a rip wrap at that altar, yes.
Yeah, energy dissipation there at that altar.
You're not filling any wetlands, propose filling wetlands for the project. You know, we're not.
We want to avoid, obviously, we want to avoid scouring that location, so.
Yes, we're definitely going to discharge it to some sort of.
Any mitigation in there, yeah.
I am, I drew it at a 50 scale. You don't have it in front of you or maybe you do have. So the 40 scale doesn't quite get the entire paved area, which I want to kind of show. You know, I think it's 50 scale works fine. If we just show the whole site, I'd have to do another plan with 100 scale, which I don't really know if that's. So I don't.
I think we're going to focus pretty much on the location of the impact. That's that's what we should do, Paul. It's a big.
Yeah.
Would the board agree with that? I mean, it's not like this is a complete remake of the whole site.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah.
And I think as far as lighting, the old spotlights around the building, those aren't being used. Just the new lights that were added to the building, so we're going to take those lights and just move them forward. And we will give you the cut sheets. Those are the same lights that were designed by J L Lighting or Jan Lighting, so.
Jim Stock, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll provide those cut sheets. It's very minimal lighting that we're going to have in the building.
Sounds good.
Linda, do you have any questions?
No. So you know exactly what we need for the application?
I was pretty much all filled out. The next thing I do is submit the DEP so I can have a receipt that I submitted the application, then we'll submit it to the town. And when's the next submission deadline, Ted? I know we're off by a week here, so I'm not sure when that is. I should know that by.
Get it to me in a week.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Okay.
So will there be the next planning board meeting, is that that's the full application? Would we have to set the what do you call that?
Probably.
Huh?
We have to look at it first. I mean, the planning board's got to determine if it's complete at that at the next meeting.
And then there's a public hearing.
Then they do the then they set a public hearing after that, yeah. All right, that'll put the that'll put the determination of completeness down on the 23rd.
Yeah. If they can get it to me a week, technically, yeah.
Yeah, if you can get it, if you can get it to Tad before next Thursday, Paul, we can get it on the agenda for the 23rd.
I will do my best for sure.
And then then it will be a public hearing after that?
Yeah.
And then it can be all done at that point?
Yep, yeah.
As beautiful as Paul always makes it.
Well, the urgency is suddenly gone, but still.
Good.
But I thought auto repair was an was an essential service.
Auto repair is an essential service. That doesn't mean it didn't drop off by like 70%.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, no, we went from going to being three weeks out to just scheduling for the week, so.
Yeah, that's that's like my business. The IRS extended this out to July, so nobody wants to file a tax return now.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if people aren't allowed to be out on the streets, it's kind of hard for them to go get their oil changed, so. But anyway.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, I'm going to sign off.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Stay safe. See ya.
Bye-bye.
Next item. Runners run. Wait, no, it's not.
No, it's logging, it's all logging run.
Yeah, it is. It is all logging road. There it is.
Is David on or is Katie on? Who's who's on?
I'm right here. Rickaya is right next to me.
Look, okay, Kay is right next to me. Okay, good. All right, Mr. Chairman, take it away. The applicants are here.
Determination of completeness. We have an application before us. He wants to cut between four and five acres of land in order to to create pasture for horses. I think the first thing we have to do is the sidewalk to go out and take a look at this so that we can see what it is that we're looking at, where it is, what kind of an impact it will have on the neighborhood. This is in the R1 district.
Right. We're not looking to have an equestrian ranch out here. We're just looking to put a pony and a horse in the backyard, so.
David, were you thinking about some other animals, right? You were going to do some subsistence farming or just just horses?
Potentially, but I mean, right now it's just the horses. So if that's the case, then we'll we'll do this again. It was literally just to bring horses home.
Okay.
We're we're stabilizing two horses in New Hampshire right now and it's a long drive, so.
I think I think at this point, we need we just need to schedule a sidewalk so that we can walk out, take a look at it, make sure that it's going to fit in with everything else. Just having a couple of horses should not put him over the 5,000-pound limit.
No, they're each 1,000 pounds.
Yeah, we've already discussed this. The applicant knows the limitations of animal husbandry in the district of 5,000 pounds. They just would like to do a clear cut and they have to get a planning board approval to get a clear cut. So they can make pasture, which frankly speaking is part of the agricultural heritage of Arundel.
There's a branch right across the street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, can we do a sidewalk before the next meeting at 6 o'clock?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
That would be next Thursday.
Well, technically, I hate to be a bugaboo, but we have a shelter in place order in the state, and that means no non-essential meetings or outings, and I think we should adhere to that.
What specifics, what specifics would you, would you be looking for on a sidewalk?
This, basically, we looked at it to see how close you are to the neighbors, what, what kind of clearing you're going, in this case, you're clearing 75% of the property.
Right.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that, where are you buddying up against the neighbors? Are you going to clear it right up to the property line?
No, we were planning on, I don't know if you, do you have the application in front of you?
Yes, I do.
All right, so we were planning on leaving a buffer zone on the, around the property. We weren't gonna clear cut all the way up to the property lines. We were gonna leave maybe 20 feet.
I think it was gonna be around 30.
35.
Yeah, so that they're on the, there's two borders of the property, the, and I don't know what orientation you have. I can show you on the map here, so.
Yeah.
The rear border and this whole side, I think even all the way out to here, but yeah, this is, this is all wooded on the ones, maybe got the wrong side here. It's kinda hard to tell. Yeah, so this whole side is wooded and so is the rear. There's nothing there at all. And then we've got some, the closest approach would be a, I think there's a home right around here on the backside, and there's nothing else touching the rear. And then we do have some neighbors on this side here that, yeah, if you needed to see, I'm not sure where the structures are.
But we're planning on leaving about 35 feet.
Yeah, it's not. We're not gonna be unreasonable and require our neighbors to, to see through the trees, just for show. That wouldn't be fair, so.
How do you wanna handle that, planning board? What's that? Runners and circulate them? I'll do the sidewalk and circulate them?
That's not a bad idea.
Let me know when you do it, Ted. I'll join you.
You'll be eight feet away from me when you do.
Yeah, I, I think on a, an eight, nine, eight, is it nine? On a seven acre parcel, I think we can maintain spacing.
But that isn't the order. I hate to say it, and I don't, I mean, I'm not gonna attend. The shelter in place order says no non-essential meetings or gatherings, period, unless you need to go to the market, doctor, or something else. I think we should adhere to what the governor has asked us to do.
Would it be possible for me to walk back there with a measuring tape and a video capable phone and do like a virtual tour for you guys? Or is that not?
I'm fine with that, but I really, you know, she was very specific, and this thing is very serious, and I think we need to follow the guidelines, period.
Well, if that's the case, then I, I'll tell you honestly, Susan, I'm an essential worker.
Then you should go.
Yeah. Yep, and that's why I volunteered, cuz I, because, you know, we try to keep the, the, we do have an essential function to try to keep things still running. You know, and this is, the ability of people to be able to use their property and do things on their property, I think is part of that.
But I think you also, excuse me for having this discussion during we're, you know, discussing this permit, but as you rightly, I think, said that we're one of the few, if only, planning boards that are continuing to operate remotely, let alone do sidewalks. I really think it is in violation of what the letter and the spirit is of what the governor has asked us to do. And it's the same as people walking on the beaches, even though there's an order not to walk there. I think we should comply with what we've been asked to do. I, you know, if you guys wanna go, then you should go.
I can also provide drone footage.
I mean, drone footage is fine with me. I mean, visuals are fine with me. I'm happy to meet an extra time, do whatever you ask, but I do think.
You don't have to come out. If you wanna stay home, by all means.
Shelter in place. I think that's what we should do.
Okay.
They called it a lockdown, and that's what we're supposed to do.
I, I can organize and arrange and provide a, a first person perspective view via cellphone if you'd like. I'm not sure what the video quality is gonna give you guys, and I can also fly a drone over the property and show you where everything is.
I think a drone is fantastic. I think it's better than what we'd ordinarily see, so I'm okay with that. You know, desperate times call for desperate measures. I think a drone is great.
I do, we have to figure out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, David. I think also on ground doesn't hurt because right now, the, there is no, there, there is no tree cover unless there's a lot of conifers on the, on the property, then, then we'll have some visual problems from.
It's, it's a pretty nasty mishmash, honestly. Yeah, so I can, I can give you a, I can probably like put on an orange hat and walk down the property line with the drone over my head, give you the first person and the, from the top perspective at the same time, so. Yeah, you wanna see where the lines are, we can do that, and I can take still photos and send them to you and show where those photos are taken from and pointing to, like, you name it, I can make it happen, so.
Okay, is the rest of the planning?
Well, I think we should try to, I think he should have the opportunity to make it happen. That would be my feeling, so I appreciate your willingness to do that.
I can argue with that, Susan, and I, I think, David, that's a good suggestion, good, I think, good solution, so I think that would be great.
Okay, what format would you guys like to receive that information? Would you like a link to a Google Drive that has all the video and photo? Would you like to?
No, it's all, it's all new to us.
All right, well, the other option would be to do it something like this live. I'm not sure how it would get the video input into it, but I could potentially add you to a live stream of what's actually happening, if you would prefer to like ask questions.
No, I think the recorder would be better. I'm not sure everybody could do the live stream.
Okay, it's just like clicking a YouTube video and watching it live, that's all.
Yeah, I think Google Drive is great.
Okay. Is there any way for you guys to submit to me direct contact information, or do you want me to just send it to one person and?
Send it to the town planner, and he can forward it to the rest of us.
You got it.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
All right, was there anything else on the application that you needed assistance with?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Right on. All right, I'm gonna sign off then.
All right, thank you.
Now, next is Kristen. Kristen, are you here?
I am here.
Hey. There it is, okay. I know I had it. Run to his run, dog daycare, major, major condition to use application, a determination of completeness. And again, we are faced with the same issue we had on the last participant. We need to do a sidewalk.
Okay.
This is a sidewalk that we would not be able to get a drone aerial of the, the facility because it's inside.
Cause it's what?
It's indoors.
Right, right.
We could get the applicant to take photos for us, or I could, I think the applicant might let me on to take photos so that I can send to the planning board, if you would like that. Or the applicant, we could do it. It's up to you guys, how you wanna do that.
This is why, this is why an actual sidewalk matters. The last one, we, you know, what's done is what's done. But this is not really gonna be workable, I think, with simply still photos or whatever. I understand desperate times call for desperate measures, but that assumes we're in desperate times, and I we're in unusual times, but I don't think it's gotten that bad. I think it's important.
I didn't hear what it's called.
Your audio is really, it's cutting out Jens.
Yeah, I've had trouble all night long understanding you guys, so my audio's not good. I think it's my signal strength and my location.
Well, I'm fine if someone wants to come to a sidewalk. I don't have a problem.
You only need three for a sidewalk, so if there are three. Only need three for a sidewalk. So if there are three that are willing to do so, then we should do so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, in, in this case, I think we need to go, we need to be able to see for ourselves.
We don't even have to do three. We don't even need three. We could do. I'll have to go in visually, cuz I remember it's kind of a soul case.
Well, before we do the sidewalk, and if you guys wanna go, that's fine. I've already expressed my feelings about that, but were there, was there anything else that Kristen should know? That, or is there any other comments or whatever about the application in general that we should share with her? Or is it just the sidewalk that is yet to be done?
Well, in order to determine the application complete, we would need to do the sidewalk. Is there anything else, Ted, that prevents us from determining the application to be complete?
We're gonna need something from Casella Waste.
Oh, yeah.
The letter from Casella Waste should have been in with the application.
I, I saw the letter, but I thought the letter was related to the last application and was not current.
Kristen, that probably would be helpful to have that letter on letterhead and have it dated.
Okay, I'll get another letter from them. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that would help.
Is there anything else?
Not, not that I know of to determine the, the application complete. There do appear to be conflicts. Have you, have you followed along what the guidelines are? Care in animal shelters?
The, the same guidelines that have been there all along.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to make, to, to know whether or not you had reviewed them and made sure everything was referenced properly.
Well, as long as nothing's changed, should be the same.
Okay, what, a couple of questions then. You've, you've indicated that there will be no pans or anything underneath the dogs, so that there are feces in urine will drop onto the floor?
All the crates have pans, every single one of them.
Okay. Then that, that answers that question.
Anything else?
What happens if you get an aggressive dog?
Well, the last meeting, I submitted my release form, and it says right on the release form, aggressive dogs will not be accepted into daycare, and if a dog starts displaying aggressive behavior, I will have a two-strike policy. They display aggressive behavior more than twice, they're asked to leave.
Okay, I, I was curious, cuz I, I know you've said that you won't accept an aggressive dog. I was curious as to how you would handle it if you have, if for whatever reason, the owner is less than truthful about the dog, and it is aggressive, how, how you would handle that situation? Are you going to isolate the dog in some fashion?
Yes.
And where would that isolation take place?
I have a smaller area inside the larger fenced area for just that type, type of problem.
Okay.
And what do you do in inclement weather?
Well, I did start work on the other side of the garage. Yes, I know it's small and it won't hold the entire amount of dogs, but I do have that area. And I do intend to, I mean, we all let our dogs out in inclement weather to relieve themselves, so they will go out for a few minutes at a time in really awful weather and then be divided up into small groups to play in the smaller indoor area.
Right, but you couldn't separate an aggressive dog outside in an enclosed area in inclement weather, indefinitely anyway, or at least during the day. You would have to have some kind of shelter where you could house them until their owners pick them up, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so where is that?
Well, they would either be in, in the indoor area after the other ones left it, or in a crate. And I'm not gonna leave them in a crate all day. I'm not gonna leave them outside all day. You know, just because a dog is aggressive, I'm not gonna be cruel to it.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting that. What I'm saying is you said that you would put them in a smaller area outside in your yard, and I asked you, what do you do in inclement weather? The presumption is if that's where you have to separate them, you can't leave them out there all day long in bad weather, so you'd have to have some other place to put them until their owners pick them up, correct?
Yes. That's, that's what the crates are for. When they're, they're in for their rest periods, they're in a crate.
So is it in a crate or in a cage?
Well, you tell me what the definition is.
Well, a crate is like what the very kennels are that we discussed at the last meeting, and it has enclosed sides with ventilation in the front and on the sides. The cages you indicated are open on all four sides, and you've attached some kind of, you know, you, it's not oak tag, but some kind of, you know, barrier, but the cages, they're still basically open on all six sides.
Yes.
So which one, a crate, I think, is actually, the definition of that is like a very kennel, and a cage is like what you're putting the dogs in and attaching the, you know, makeshift sides to. So does a dog, an aggressive dog go in the crate? A very kennel, or does it go on the, because you're gonna have issues, I think.
Well.
Because the cages are really not private and doesn't keep an aggressive dog from being aggressive to its neighbor, really.
Okay, I do, I mean, you read ads for crates, and both the very kennels and the wire crates come up, okay? Cages, crates, whatever, yes, the wire, cage, wire crate. I have two completely separate areas with crates that there is no contact between them. They may be able to see. Between them. They may be able to see another dog from a distance. But they're completely separate.
And does that stop aggression when the dogs can see each other even though they're separate?
Um, no, not always. I can put, I can put a divider if the aggression continues. I can put a barrier so they cannot see another dog. I mean, I, I'm.
I'm just asking.
I, I know, I know, but it just, it seems like. You, that is one of the things that you are always on, that I, that there's no way. That I'm going to be able to keep. Aggressive dogs from being aggressive or fighting. Why would I do that? I mean, there are so many ways. The state can close me down. You can close me down. I am going to do the best job that I possibly can. With these dogs.
I, I'm merely saying, Kristen, there's really no, in your plan, no real way to isolate. A dog that you're having real issues with. It's, it does, it doesn't appear, uh, to me. That you have made provisions. To really isolate a dog that's really giving you big time trouble. And if you have a big dog, that can be big trouble. You know that, you, you've dealt with dogs enough.
Yeah.
So.
How, how isolated would you have a dog? How would you isolate a dog?
I'd put it in a very count. And make sure that all the sides were protected and private.
And what about, what about the grate in the front?
Uh, it depends on how you position it and where you put it. I would certainly put it in a place where you weren't, didn't have to walk other dogs by it. I mean, I own German shepherds. I have six of them, so I understand what aggression is about. So, you know, you're going to have a hard time. I'm just. You know, saying that. So that's, it's up to the guys. I mean, I'm only one vote, Kristen, so. I can't stop you from doing what you're doing. I'm just merely asking.
Well, I, I am saying I do, I do have one major area that it is under the stairs. It is covered by the, the stairs going down. It's both sides. The only part that is open is the front. Which the front of a very kennel is open also. It's, it's a.
Right, and you could, right, I totally agree with that and you can put a towel over. Over it or whatever, but it's not as exposed as a crate that's open on six sides.
So if I, if I got a couple of very kennels, would that appease you?
I, it, that's only my opinion. I'm only one member of the board. I'm merely asking you. About how practically you really can deal with a, an aggressive dog. I'm not sure you can do it in the kind of. Caged crates you, you have. So for, especially for big dogs, but that's up, you know, there's all these other board members. It's, I'm only one vote.
Okay, so I need to.
And ask the question, and I'm sorry if this has been already answered and I, the audio I had is very poor. Do I understand correctly now that you're going to use some sort of tray system under the, uh, cages? Is that right?
The wire crates, um, most of them all come with a pan. That covers the bottom of the crate to, to catch any waste. And also so the dog doesn't have to stand on the wire. All, all, all the wire crates come with these pans.
Wait, so the pan is under the wire, Kristen, not over the wire?
Over the wire.
No, it's, I think she said.
It's on the water, yeah.
The, the, the pans I have are over the wire.
So the dog stands on the pan?
Yes.
So if it defecates or urinates on the pan, then it's standing on that?
Yes.
And so.
Other than that, they're standing on the wire.
Well, so Kristen, I have another question for you and this is just. Without having running water in the building. How are you going to clean those pans with the dog standing on them if the pans are dirty?
I will take the dog out. I have extra crates. I have extra pans. I can put the dog in the exercise area while I'm cleaning the pan. Again, I. I know, I know you, uh, you know, have dogs, you're, you're a professional. But y- you just. Everything I'm trying to do, you, you have a problem with. Why would they sell? The wire crates with the pan to go on top of the wire? I mean, you, you, they talk about the puppy mills all the time with the poor dogs standing on wire. What, why?
I, I don't know. I've never seen a crate like the ones you're buying that have a pan. On top of the wire. It's always been underneath, so the waste can drop. Through the, the openings onto the pan and then the pan can be slipped out. Removed and cleaned, but if you have a dog. That's standing in the pan that has waste in it. It's kind of a mess.
Yes, I, I agree, but it, but also too, this, this is another thing that, that. I am only daycare. Okay, I'm not boarding. I'm not doing overnights. Okay, how many people have a crate in their house? Okay, usually with a bed in it. Okay, that the dog only rests in, stays overnight in. How often? Does the dog leave waste in that crate?
I don't know. I, I don't want to tell you what I'm thinking, but it happens.
It does happen. It does. I'm not saying it doesn't happen. Okay, it, yeah, all dogs have accidents. Okay, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but it's not every day. Not every dog. You know, we all have dogs in our homes. You know, whether they're, whether they're in a, a kennel crate, wha- whatever you want to call it. You know, do we ho- do we hose down our house every day? No, we.
No, but you hose the crate down. So. Listen, Kristen, I'm only raising these questions because. You want to run a, a licensed professional facility. And these are legitimate questions for a professional. To ask another professional. As I said, I'm only one vote. I know how I feel about some of the arrangements that you've made. But I can't stop you if all the other. Board members are in concert with one another and feel. That the arrangements you made are adequate. I'm just saying. To have a pan on top of the grate and have the dog. Go to the bathroom in it, whether it's sick or has an accident or whatever. And have them stand in it and then have, to have you take them out. And remove the entire pan and not have water in the building. And have it be cold or whatever it is in Maine and trying to find. A way to clean it off so that you can put that dog back in its crate. I mean, it just, the logistics of it just. Sound, you know. Nightmarish, potentially, so.
I'm going to put an, an end to this discussion. We can have. We can have this discussion at another point. Right now, we have to decide whether or not we're going to do a sidewalk. But before we do that, Jens had something that he was trying to get an answer to and I'm not sure if he did.
Okay, well, I may have misunderstood because I couldn't understand.
Okay.
What you're saying. If you want to repeat his question.
Jens, can you repeat what you had to say?
My question was whether pans would be in use and if so, would it be on top of the wire or underneath the wire? And I understand. Uh, Kristen's answer. My, my question's unanswered. I, I can. Discuss both these issues ad nauseam and I think it's time to take the next step. Uh, and my question would be, does that mean we look at the requested waivers and decide, uh. Uh, which of those are going to be, uh, appropriate?
I'm, I'm not really, not really sure. It, what, is that a, a question for? Whether the pan should be.
There's a question for, uh, for our chairman, Kristen.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question, Jens? I didn't catch all of it.
Sure. I said that I think we had talked about those two issues. The pans, uh, if they were to be used and if so, how? As well as the. Arrangements in the event that, uh, dogs become aggressive.
Yep.
I think we discussed those ad nauseam at this point. And my. What we need to do next is to consider the applicants' requested, uh, items for waiver.
Well, no, I think first we have to do a site. Be- before we look at what, what we're being asked to wa- to waive, we need to see what the facility looks like to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to waive. Items.
So Tad, do you want to go take pictures?
I can do that.
Or a video or whatever?
I can do both. I have the technology. I can't run this meeting because I don't see any of you, but I know I can make this phone do a video.
Okay, if you can, if you can go and do, get pictures, do a video. Post it up to, so that the rest of us can see it.
Yeah.
Well, we can then schedule this for, uh, the next meeting, which would be on April twenty-third.
Right.
And we could, we can discuss it at that point and determine if the application is complete. If there are items that are being, that were being asked to be waived, we can make that decision at that point.
Okay, sounds good. Kristen, I can, uh, assuming the board. Does that, I can probably arrange something next week with Kristen to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Is, is that a vote or is, do you need a vote or is that just a general direction from the board?
General direction, yeah.
That sounds good. Not in tomorrow, but I'll, I'll be in, uh, Monday, okay?
Okay.
All right, so I'll call you. We'll make an arrangement.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other business. Oh, Mr. Chairman, you're running this, not me.
That's right, other business. You're the person with the other business boss.
Oh, I thought, I was waiting for. Um, don't forget we have a, I don't know how this is going to work. We have a public hearing next week. In which we're going to be going over all the ordinance, uh, changes. You all have copies of that, I assume, right?
I believe so.
Okay.
You, you sent them out to us, so I put them all up in my OneDrive.
Right, right, and I have, I have, uh, I probably have, um, also will have Gary Martin as, uh, an application. I don't know if we want to do it first or second, um, or after the public hearing. It's all up to you, but. Here, here's what I'm running against. I have to know what we're going to be posting. Um, by next week because I have to get a, a deadline of all the questions for the warrant into Simone. By Friday, and so that means by the tenth, I've got to do it. So I'm going to write up the stuff, assuming that, that it goes through and then we'll just weed out what we, what you think will. Well, you're, you're going to hear the public response or you may not hear any public response because, you know, people may be scared of this format. Um. I, you know. I've advertised it and I've, I've set up the meeting, Rich, on mine, which I, I think I'm going to have to make another amendment and say, don't. I think, Rich, you're going to have to schedule a meeting because obviously I don't. With multiple people, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I don't even get video here, so. Um. You and I'll have to probably reschedule, um. You know, exactly, uh, the, the exact, um, address for this, but, um. That's, um, that's basically what I think we have scheduled for next week and then we have the twenty-third meeting.
Okay. I will, I will set up a meeting for public hearings. And send it out and I'll do that tomorrow, so you all should get a notification. Giving you all of that information to log in. Everybody else, Tad, you can go to the website.
Actually, you know what? I, I, I think I actually have to talk to. We might have to have me do it because I advertised it on a certain date. I, I, I advertised the, uh. The connection and so I think maybe I might just have to sit in the office where we have better wifi. And do it. I may just have to do it, so forget everything I just said.
Okay, it'll be fine.
Okay, I will make you the, uh, the, uh, the alternate and you can, and you will run the meeting and you, who you want while I take notes. But I was, I, I'm not pleased with the, the effect. How effective I'm, my internet connection is here. It's very unstable and I can't even see any of you guys.
Yeah, it keeps coming back saying the bandwidth is dying.
Yours does that too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting that too, and I, I haven't seen any of you since this thing's began. I. I thought, and we haven't even heard from Marty. Um, so. Um. Yeah, I, I'm going to, I'll, I'll try it from, um, work. Uh, because I think we have much better bandwidth there, so. Uh, that's about all I've got. Um, the only other thing I did have, oh, Rich and I. Are going to have a conversation with, um. Con Ed, who wants to put a solar farm on Ben's property. And, um, they, uh, now suddenly they're in a hurry. Uh, even though we told them, I think, what was it back in? September, uh, to, to get it going. Uh, now they're in a hurry. They want us to get going on that and I, I don't see us. Being able to do anything for them before, um. The gym meeting. So, but we're, we're going to be starting negotiations with them on that. Uh, also, I'm going to need you to sign, I don't know how we're going to sign my Lars, by the way. Uh, that's a real, that's a real problem and, you know, for Ben to, uh. To register or to record his Mylar, he's going to have signatures on there, so we might have to have a weird situation. Uh, where I'm going to have to go around the hazmat center. You guys are going to have to come one at a time and sign something on the front porch of the town hall. Um, but, you know, we need signatures on these, these, uh. These Mylars for them to be recorded. Uh, and again, that's something we're going to have to talk to Leah about, get her input on and how the hell do we do this?
Well, the recorder isn't even open. Is it?
Really?
No.
They're not, they're closed.
Everything's closed. Yeah.
Yeah, the courthouse is closed.
Everything's closed.
Oh, well, that ends that question, that problem, doesn't it?
They're recording online.
Yeah, maybe you can use a DocuSign or an EchoSign, uh. Ted.
EchoSign, not familiar with it. We don't have that technology. EchoSign, explain that to me.
It's like DocuSign. It's a, it's an Adobe product.
Okay, I'll look at it. What's it called?
Better, but EchoSign or, or DocuSign.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
I don't know if you can do that with plans though, right?
Yeah, I know, MyLars.
Yeah, it's physical.
It's a physical thing.
Right, but at least you can have our agreement that we signed it until we can actually physically sign it, given the circumstances.
I could, well, well, we could do that with the findings of fact and so forth. Like, they could show that to a bank. Uh, what I've been doing so far is I've been attesting. To, uh, the planning board, uh, action and then using the minutes. Um, as, uh, as a documentation, you know, signed minutes as verification that my attesting is, is, uh. Is not forged, that it actually did happen as, as I attest. So, um, that's why I always need these minutes. Oh, that's one thing you guys can do, approve the minutes.
Uh, yes, Susan is here now. We can approve the minutes.
So you guys can approve the minutes to the fifth and the, uh. Well, and the, oh, then I can get Corinne, who is, I'm still not delivered, I don't think. Has she? No. No, she's, she, she promised she would tell me. Um, but I can get her to sign it as her last act. Before she, you know, drops down into a motherhood all over again. before she, you know, drops down into a motherhood all over again.
Okay, so let's start with the meeting, the minutes from March 5th.
March 5th.
And let's see, Marty was there, Susan was there, I was there, and Jens was there. We've got the four people needed to vote on it.
So I move that we approve the minutes of March 5th.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. To approve the minutes for March 5th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Marty waived?
Yep, it is unanimous.
Of all the, Roger wasn't there, Roger's going to.
I abstained, I wasn't there.
I abstained too.
Right, Tom. Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have made that that statement. And then to.
March 12th.
March 12th. Yeah, again, Marty was there, Susan was there, I was there, and Jens was there. And Tom and Roger will be abstaining. They were not present.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the minutes of March 12th. As written.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Marty's waving.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, it is four yes and two abstentions.
Got it. Okay, so those minutes are approved. Good, now I can get them signed because Jim Mackel has been complaining to me that I'm not putting signed minutes up. So we'll get those signed and now I'll take care of his concerns.
Okay, anything else that we need to be aware of?
I have nothing else on my notes about this. No, no. Just that we're we're hunkered down. I will be doing a lot of work from from home because I have a remote connection to my phone, I have remote, well, I can get my messages. I have remote connection to my email and to all my my computer, my whole computer. So I'm going to be doing more and more from home. And the town hall is staffed, the downstairs area is staffed by one person a day. And Beth, Jim and I are upstairs and Keith is in his office and and we just, we're shut down. We work from there, but I'm going to start working remotely from now on as much as I can. So, so if you, don't, don't try to stop by. Call my cell phone, don't call, don't call work phone if you need to talk to me. Okay? Hey. Stay safe, everybody.
Yes.
Motion we adjourn.
Second.
Nine o'clock, nine oh two.
Nine oh two.
Good job, you guys.
Get home early tonight.
Yeah.
I know, the first time.
These meetings.
They're not bad, I'm glad, I'm glad you, can you guys see me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's not fair, I don't see a single one of you. We all sticking your tongue out at me. All right, so, all right, so we will see you next week.
All right.
Thanks, Chad. Thanks, everybody. Okay.
All right, care.